Press the video.
Yes, please.
All right. I need to do that again then?
Nope, you're good.
All right. Do I need to enter this meeting yet?
Yes, please.
Okay. I am calling to order the July nine, two thousand twenty five Albany County Plan for some regular meeting. And we will begin through a call. Let's go, Cornet.
Here.
This handing is absent. Here's this Ben David is absent. Right there. And I am here as a lap. So we have a forum. They have a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. May I have permission to approve the meetings for June eleventh, two thousand twenty five?
I will approve the minutes from June meeting, June eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that. I would note that I missed the meeting, but I was able to go back and look at the video and found the minutes helpful. So we've accomplished one of our goals with the minutes, which is to help those who weren't there.
Joe's been doing an excellent job.
Well, there's the technology that he brought to it was what made all the difference. So anyway.
I'll stay on my comment.
I'm not just disparaging Jones' fiber. I.
Any further discussion? In that case, all those in favor of approval of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Disclosures, conflicts of interest. Mr. Cornet, anything?
None.
Ms. Hinkley?
No.
And I have nothing either. So we will proceed with our first and only public application that he is zoning district amendment CDA S zero five, S two five. And please note that Mr. Ben David is set up. Very good. Is this yours, David, or Joe?
This is mine.
Okay. But go ahead.
All right, so. To be seen Karen Hayes are the applicants and property owners of. For this application. Property is located at thirteen twenty one Carroll Street. The request is to change the zoning to neighborhood business from small lot residential. The Laramie Rivers Conservation District commented on being cautious about erosion and soil degradation and reclaiming. And encouraged reclaiming of disturbed areas. Others that commented provided no issues of concern. The staff analysis of this application is that the application generally follows a comprehensive plan and Laramie growth plan. And that neighborhood business zoning district is compatible with residential uses. The con plan also supports a mix of commercial and residential uses. Proximity to the city makes this area growth efficient. The application will not negatively impact surrounding land uses. The zoning district is compatible with residential zoning districts and the city technology and office zoning. The only development or land use on any of their surrounding properties. Include the trail that exists on the the east property. The Sears Sky Technology Park. And then the personal storage buildings that are directly to the west of the proposed zoning district amendment. The properties north and south are vacant at this time. And staff recommends approval of this application. And be happy to answer any questions. Mister Hayes is in me and he would be happy to answer any questions you have for him as well.
I'll begin with one question, then we'll go around the table here. The zoning is for neighborhood business. And according to the use table, there's no residential use allowed in that zoning. So is this being grandfathered in or?
Well, if you if you look at the the use table, there is actually an office building and residential uses category, which is allowed.
Okay.
In any case, the the use would be grandfathered and if it would remain.
Okay. Yeah, and I saw that and I was just getting also the residential uses, that particular section, and it was shown as being prohibited. So that's why I asked the question. Okay. You follow what I'm saying or?
Yeah, okay, there is a use that allows it.
All right, very good. All right, in that case, Ms. Cornet.
Yeah, I did tell you rode by there today and there's construction going on. Is that is there a building going up right now?
If if there isn't the property, the property has a permit for a now building.
Is this the building that's going to become the new business or?
I don't know.
Yes, so if this is so that the building that's being built, its footprint is approved. We have a permit for that already. And then if this is approved, then the business would operate in that building.
Okay. And then I was a little confused also. It said that Rocky Mountain Reclamation has been there since nineteen ninety two. Did they mean on this property or in the neighborhood?
It's actually been on that property. So it would be before any zoning ordinance existed. The business has already operated on that property and honestly operates there today and has never stopped operating at that spot since nineteen ninety two.
Okay. So where's their building or is it?
That is the office. Rocky Mountain Recreation has a large, has a large industrial facility in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Second Baker. Second Baker is our yard, large yard and where all the equipment is and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that the business that you'd be running out of that property then?
Yes.
And so all that equipment and everything will be coming?
No, 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 no.
No, it'll still just be an office.
Still just the office.
Okay, so this is just going to. Bring what's happening now into alignment with the regulations. Is that the plan?
That's why that's how I that's how I see it. Instead of just asking for a non-conforming, you know, what the business operating there would be grandfathered, I believe. But guess since it's been there since nineteen ninety two. But instead of doing that, it's just upgrading the zoning to make everything. Oshin, I'll oshin the world there.
Yeah.
Dave, did I misspeak there or?
No, I would add that so. Don't if you correct me, the offices, there were offices or workers that were working in the home, right?
Yeah.
So it was like, so there's some some employees at the home. So. They're moving them into another building. And so that's what really kind of kicks it into, you know, it's not. I mean, I can't speak to say it's non-conforming or not. I just don't know enough about the property, but this would bring everything into conformance. And if he did not have employees, then it would just be a home business. And so it's because there are some employees that'll be on the property, that's where it needed a different zoning.
Yeah, and I was thinking that Rocky Mountain Reclamation would be more like commercial, but it's just the office. That's why, that's why you're going for.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now I just wanted to clarify that, so that's all I've got.
Mr. David?
Yeah, I was wondering about the difference between a home business and a neighborhood business, but I think I understand it now.
Mr. Hinkley? Got a phone? I forgot to issue the command to silence phones. That's never happened before.
Well, because this is a, at least to me, this neighborhood business is kind of new. I had some of the same questions. So. And I flagged the same other commissioner Platt had that we don't do single family. So remind me where in the matrix? What you just said, Mr. Kirch.
Okay. If you look on on page. Four dash three, just thirty six on the PDF. There's an office building with a mix of residential uses. And that is allowed in a business.
So what? What was the sense of saying? Single family and multifamily dwellings are prohibited, but mix of residential uses.
I don't know.
Okay.
That's my answer. Yeah, I it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You think that a mix of uses would be appropriate and or like allowing a single family or multi-family in the residential area. And this would say the same thing, so it's kind of conflicting, so.
So just maybe a little contradiction in our in our table.
Yeah, something to note and correct in the future.
The other thing that flagged for me was that talked about auto salvage is having been on previous or existing use there.
Adjacent.
Adjacent use, okay, so.
That was what the applicant had in his application.
Right, right, I could, I was, I was. What was going on here? So it looked like a lot of those other uses are just kind of grandfathered in. Like like that one. When I look at the zoning. It doesn't seem to match up with what's on the ground out there, various places.
Well, the the buildings that. I mean, we're not really talking about the neighboring property, but.
No, no, it's just my curiosity about how all these fit together. The adjacent property is zoned. What?
A small lot residential.
Right.
And those are what we've been told in our office is there for personal use. So you can have outbuildings on the property for personal use. If he had people going in and out of the property and using it like a salvage yard, that would be a whole different story. What we were told by the by the property owner was that those are being used for his personal. Auto automobiles, whether that's true or not, that's.
So when I read it, it's used in auto storage and maintenance facility. That is for personal use is the difference.
That's my understanding, yes. Or that would be the the, yeah, I I don't know anything about the auto whatever. If he's doing mechanic on that property.
Sure, mixing up the the two, can we proceed to that basis? I'm reading the applicant's response.
I mean, you might, yeah, you should probably ask the applicant, because I don't, I'm not aware.
Well, we don't have any questions for the Davis, so again.
Well, okay, so then if we want to confine this.
Well, you've got another question for David.
Well, just give me a second here. Again, that what what this neighborhood business thing, it talks about in when I read the comprehensive plan about. And the learning growth plan. Businesses that that are supply local services, like a little grocery store or something like that, seems to be the philosophy behind neighborhood business. Am I understanding that correctly?
And offices, yeah. This would be an office.
Okay, but there was there was, and I'm not objecting to this all again, I'm just trying to understand, there seemed to be some emphasis in the. In the words that I'm reading in the plans about this idea of of it's a serving the local community. Reading too much into that or? I don't know that I can point to those words, but I. Run through.
I think that what you're looking at is in the zoning resolution itself.
Right.
Because small or this is not, you know, really addressed specifically in the con plan.
The request for a neighborhood business owner was adopted to allow for businesses that are conducive to nearby residential land uses, for example. It just seemed like that theme kind of ran through this. That's quoting from your staff analysis.
Right.
So I'm just a little elaboration on again what what you guys see as appropriate for neighborhood business.
I mean, I I think where what's in the land use table. That is how we've defined that. That makes sense, so we've got what was in the. Definition or whatever you want us to call it in the zoning district chapter in chapter three. We've used that to determine which uses can be done within neighborhood business. And. We've considered what what this application would be for would hit that use, I guess. What 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 you're looking at, the purpose statement and for neighborhood business as the purpose of the neighborhood business zone is to protect the character and property values of residential neighborhoods. While allowing the operation of appropriate neighborhood oriented businesses. Businesses shall be limited professional offices and small retail businesses that provide goods and services. That provide goods and services. These areas should be located near major roads and have water and sewer available. So I mean, what it says is is that they're they cannot have offices, this is limited to professional offices, which is what I would define this use as. And small bits, small retail businesses that provide goods and services, that's a whole different. Phrase to me, so I I feel like it meets the purpose and it meets what's in the land use sheet.
Okay. And I think like the Laramie River Growth Plan where we had tried to identify, this is a, again, the the model there was a little neighborhood grocery or again, something that that was. Locally oriented, which is where I was seeing those.
Sure.
Come forward. Obviously, if they're not reflected in land use table, then that's fine. Okay, well, I just wanted to explore that aspect of neighborhood business. And I appreciate the difference between that and commercial, which would have been an alternative and would have been much, much more expansive.
Sure.
So just in outline form, what does this not allow? Neighborhood business.
Well, I could tell you what does allow.
I could, I've got the table for you. Conceptually, the idea is that it not be a. What kind of a business would not qualify as a neighborhood business?
Like a mechanic shop. Fee lot. Yeah, I actually did a spreadsheet of what you can and can't or what you can do, I just didn't put what you can't do on it, so.
Probably classification.
Let me, let me.
I can see it in the.
A bar.
The bowling alley. Right.
Or like maybe they could bring their shop.
Auto shop.
Or their office.
So so things that would have a lot of people coming from.
Apartment area, is that part of the idea? Right, I mean, they're they should be businesses that are not going to. You know. Provide a lot of impacts to surrounding neighbors. So. Yeah. Or that they're providing goods and services to help surrounding neighbors.
Right, which this isn't overtly a neighborhood thing.
Correct, correct, yeah, but it would not necessarily impact the neighbors either.
Right, right. And where that thinking goes is something that I think we responsibly bring up each time we have a zoning change. It isn't, do we approve of what this gentleman's plans are, but do we approve a classification? What all does that classification allow? And I guess what I'm hearing back from you and seeing the land use table is not much.
Right.
Yeah.
And David, again, what precipitate this is an attempt to bring the property to performance. Is our zoning district uses allowed, right?
Well. It's to allow him to do what he's doing with kind of an expanded use because he has a new building on the property. I'm, I'm, yeah, we're not going to say that he was doing anything illegal.
Right.
Or not. You know, that's not. Something that we really explored too much. He came to us and wanted to make sure that this, what he was proposing would would work, so.
No, no, I was just wanting to get my mind around neighborhood business, because we don't haven't seen one of these before.
Okay, well, in that case, I guess have Mister Hayes come forth, please. If you would, please answer some questions. If you have anything else you'd like to add to your application, now's the time.
What was the first part of your statement?
Well, if you'll stand for some questions for us. And if you have anything else you'd like to add at this point to your application. Additional background, whatnot.
No, I don't think I, no additional background.
In that case, we'll rule you. Hit it hard. Well, that went very hard.
I have no questions again. I haven't seen neighborhood business before, but.
What's the water sewer situation?
City.
Okay.
City for water, actually septic for sewer. However, we have in the original deeds, the ability to connect to city sewer if we so desire.
Why not annex?
Well, I'm pretty confident that the city, well, I have, I also own the property across the street that is in the city. And so. I believe annexing into the city, that property would not be allowed to be built unless I fully develop fifteenth street all the way to the property.
Okay.
And so then that's not not financially feasible for just a small. Well, hopefully be a small twenty foot wide office at one end of the building, you know, forty foot. Personal storage area at the other end of the building.
Yeah, that's perfectly acceptable answer, I was talking right beside the city that.
Yeah.
And that and it's useful, you've got water, so if the sewer, if if there were some future use of the property, which had a greater need for sewer, you're you're set up to.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
And that trail that comes, the recreational trail comes, it comes into fifteenth before I looked at the map, right?
Yeah, so where fifteenth street pavement stops is where my property begins and where. The city property begins. On on the south side of that line is the existing development at Thaxton Court. And then the school district, I believe, um, yeah, 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 the school district owns on the other side of the street there. And so then that. Most people, and we don't block usage of the continuation of fifteenth street there, but that's actually our personal driveway that turns to gravel. Everybody uses it going from Carroll Street and around and.
Well, I did, I biked out the other day, I saw private, so.
Yeah, thank you.
The sign's there, but we don't do much to enforce it.
About though, that's why I asked.
Yep.
The sign that's there, it says family this way and visitors this way, that's. Which is what we're talking about here, is this goes up to the house where you live and the other goes.
Right.
Seems to fit. Okay, plug up.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We will conduct a public hearing and I'm not seeing a whole lot of public here. Is there anyone online who would like to make comment about this? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. In that case, we'll discuss this. I'll lead off discussion by saying I have biked by this house. Innumerable times, I never had any idea of anything in the house until we got this application. And I thought anywhere I was, and I was thinking, it can't possibly be that, because it's just a house. It must be the quietest business around. Anyway. Let's see.
To provide a simple platform discussion, Mr. Chairman, I will recommend, I move that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Hayes zoning district amendment, CDA oh five two five. Adopting and incorporating staff analysis, finding as fact and conclusions that have law as each are stated in this staff report.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? In that case, we will vote. Ms. Cornet?
Aye.
Mister Hinkley?
Aye.
Ms. Ben David?
Aye.
Can I vote aye, that motion carries? Good luck at County Commissioners. I think your luck will be good, but you know, good luck anyway. Thanks for being here.
Your landscaping is a nice little oasis out there.
Takes a lot of water. You don't want to see my water bill in the summertime.
Okay, and.
Did you say, there's no need for you to stick around for the rest of our service?
Thank you, you're welcome. Just go make him say. Thank you, Mister Hayes.
Thank you for hearing. Definitely was grueling enough. I don't see citizens who would be or offer any citizens comments, so we're going to move on and. We are twenty four minutes into our meeting, I do not believe we need to break, so we're going to move on to the current planning project. But any subdivision amendments, discussion only? And Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So we gave you the whole document, it's all red lines all the way through, we're only looking at chapters six and seven. And we removed the chapters after seven and we're going to put them into the zoning resolution.
With some slight alterations up top, particularly in definitions.
Oh, okay.
And then. There's one change in the subdivision application requirements concerning. Fire areas, which we. Moved out from mountain subdivisions because it seemed possibly like a good idea to consider. But sorry.
Matt's been doing the heavy lifting on this, so he knows what's kind of going on a little bit.
Yeah.
But I mean, we've actually been working together as well as with Jake Schneider, county engineer, to. Just get this all updated. The big lift was chapter six, just to figure out the design standards for roads and those types of things. And so really, we're just bringing this to you for a first look, first questions. Anything specifically that catches your eye that we need to discuss? And then we're we're working on the zoning portion where we've moved mobile home park. And campground regulations into the zoning, and so we want, we want them both to go together, but we've got this pretty much wrapped up. So I mean, it's going to take some time to go through both documents, I think. So this is a first look of this one and hopefully we can get to the other one soon, once we get that all.
And what would you like for like from us here tonight?
If there's anything specifically that you have a question about or that's just problematic in your minds or whatever, let's discuss that. If not, we're not really wanting, I mean, we don't have to have like a huge discussion and go through it line by line or anything like that. This is kind of a first look, so.
Provide some.
Yeah, and actually.
Give you some overview.
Well, I'll say, you all wouldn't know if you were going to know. At Matt's request slash invitation or told Matt it'd be fine, I took a look at the design stuff about figuring with sewer whenever it was. And I reread this over the weekend. And to mine, I'll get your sense of it also. I mean, I noticed one typo and I thought everything else was good. I mean, I thought the whole document was good. And obviously Jake weighed in, so I was glad to see that.
Yeah.
And so I'm curious to know what your impressions are, Commissioners?
Yeah, I think it was pretty good.
I know.
I found it a little overwhelming and I was hoping for some context here, which I just got.
We get that.
So I appreciate.
Well, I read, I read through the whole thing. Appreciate the fact that it obviously was was done with some considerable care and a lot of it is just, let's get this terminology consistent, so. Certainly appreciated all of the efforts there. So then I went through the whole thing and just commented out places expecting that perhaps. We could just go through the red line and get explanations as we go along and how maybe that's premature.
No, it's not premature, we can do anything we liked.
So that would be my suggestion if others had comments in in like the very first one was, and why use the red line rather than.
Well, this one, Burr. I mean, is that your job? Sure, yeah. Okay, good. And staff helpful, not helpful?
No, that'd be fine.
All right, well, let's do that then.
Yeah, that's great.
Because it obviously has a combination, little stuff and big stuff in it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, Matt or Joe will put it up on the screen.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So are they going to, so are there red line changes or?
We'll just play through the pages and I'll see who has questions and right now, page one dash one. If I'm going past you, Burr, let me know.
Well, actually, you have.
All right, I'm very good.
I'm on room number four.
Okay, cool.
Where are we starting?
Room number four, I'm clear back at the table of contents and it bears on what I heard here, but just walk us through that a little more slowly. We've deleted six chapters. Right? Right out and all that, so.
Yeah, I guess we have.
Yeah, no, it was, it was big.
Yeah.
Okay, so tell me about that again, all of that stuff is somebody else or we didn't need it or what?
So. I can only off the top of my head remember three. Okay, so one of the chapters landscape landscaping was a separate chapter. We made that not a chapter, moved it into subdivision design. I was just like thinking structurally, that doesn't make sense. I got a subdivision design, so I put it in that chapter. That also wasn't very long. And then.
Mountain subdivisions, for example.
So mountain subdivisions.
Chapters that floated around that.
Totally speaking on David's behalf, he has used that those standards once. In the time that he has been with the planning department, so.
Yeah, and also with the change of the standards. Weren't the mountain subdivision standards going to be more, they were supposed to be more lenient to allow for. Just the topography and stuff, but I think the way that we've written them, it it's actually.
In some areas, they were like more stringent.
Yeah.
So it, from a practical.
Um, so it, from a practical uh, perspective, the the planning department did not really think that they had much utility um, due to the fact that they'd never really been used. Um, and with uh, a lot of it was specific to roads. That was pretty much, the the vast bulk of mountain subdivisions was focused on road standards and deviations that were allowed for mountainous subdivisions, but uh, those would be able to fit into the road standards that have been provided by Jake Schneider, uh, county engineer.
So so we we just won't have a thing called mountain subdivisions, right?
No.
Okay, and and the roads kind of ticks in my mind somewhere back, whether I was on the side of the table, the other one, there was a a mountain subdivision and they had trouble with the road because the mountains were so constrictive, they couldn't do a certain thing and had to come to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's the sort of thing that would be handled in the existing road standards, perhaps as an exception or.
Yeah, a lot of it is, so I mean, essentially with the road standards, um. And I think what what we've seen time and time again from Jake is that he is I mean, he want, he's he's expecting that these roads be designed and built well. Um, from, you know, a civil engineering perspective, uh, and that any sort of like deviation from those standards, it's gonna need approval from him or from the county engineer. Um, and there needs to be some sort of like engineering, uh, you know, principle guiding that deviation. Um, so I think that the the main thrust of of ensuring that, you know, subdivision roads are adequately built is maybe a little more enshrined now than it was previously.
And I would just add too, I mean, we do have the variance process, not that we want to like push people towards that. But if there are just weird situations, um, with the help of Jake, we can, we can make sure that we we allow for a road in a circum- circumstance that just is just weird, you know, that just doesn't work.
While still being, you know, defensible from an engineering perspective.
Um, other deleted chapters, mobile homes.
So.
Grounds.
Mobile homes and campgrounds, the way that those were defined in here, they weren't subdivisions. Uh, because it didn't actually involve the division of land. Um.
That that was what I was guessing, so are those
So.
Or should somewhere else or?
So we're 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 working on them. I have provided like a preliminary draft and those will be handled as conditional use permits um, in the zoning resolution.
And um, just as an aside, I've been doing a little, I actually today I was doing a little research on other folks' regulations. Um, and there was, I know Campbell County, um. And I think Larrimby County, Nettrova County, they all, I mean, the zoning is where these are handled.
Yeah.
Um, so the it's just, ours are odd. That's where they've been since nineteen ninety seven when they wrote these, you know? Um, there's this weird provision or, I mean, not weird, but it in the statute that talks about subdivisions, the definition includes mobile homes, mobile home courts, is that?
Mobile home courts.
Which, um, in.
In in my opinion, in order for that to fit, you would have to actually be like purchasing or renting the like space, the physical land, um, because just like kind of creating little courts and having people put that, it like it would have to be laid out in such a way that it was divisible essentially. Um, if it's all just under one common ownership, like not platted, not intended to be. And I mean, it, uh, I've thought about, I don't know, different scenarios a lot and yeah, mobile home like courts get weird, um, because, and I think it would really just come to Dave and Joe would like really need to flag like exactly what are you doing here? And how is that? You know, because if if it if it is like they're dividing out, you know, individual spaces and say like those are being leased as an individual space, then that gets us into subdivision. Um, but in other situations. Yeah, I don't know. If it's like just a hookup and you're just paying for a hookup, that's not.
Okay, so I want to build a mobile home, I have to be zoned commercial?
No, not necessarily.
To own a mobile home?
No, I want to build a mobile home park. Obviously, I'm not gonna have two acre minute lot sizes, so.
Well, what am I? Commercial. I mean, if you're gonna be.
A new one would be.
Unless you have like a giant ranch and you had enough dens to make this little tiny, you know, but yes, commercial would be where. We've actually talked about that as well, but I don't know. I mean, there's potential we could create a new zone just for mobile home parks, but.
So, yeah, after, cause I don't know, when I first started almost four years ago, I think like one of the big first things I got was like redo, um. You know, chunk out preliminary plat and uh, final plat, which led to a complete rewrite of the first half of the subdivision resolution. And then this has taken about two years since then, uh, to get the second half broken out. Um, cause a lot of it is engineering standards that, you know, I can't just, I'm David and Joe, like we can't just come up with it. Um, so it's been a lot of like working with the county engineer and then uh, this has been it, but I think we can focus a lot more heavily on sort of like a comprehensive uh, rewrite of the zoning resolution as well. Um, because they could use like some consistency updates.
Yeah, well, my basic question, if something's missing here, did it, is it because we didn't need it like an appendix or is it because we put it somewhere else that I guess?
Yeah, we're we're in the process of putting those in zone.
Okay.
So if I remember correctly, uh, we were considering changing mobile homes, the mobile mobile parks from commercial to another kind of zoning because of the changes in ownership and how, uh, the new owners mistreat. Oh, residents, is that a chance to address this?
Well. If you're. If we're getting towards like, I mean, I think I already speaking about like private equity buying up mobile homes. Uh, the county has no authority to regulate ownership. Um, and we do not have the authority uh, to in any way interject into um, landlord tenant type situations. That is all private contract.
Right, but if can you regulate the during construction such that it is a usable space? We have, we can, we put restrictions on regular subdivisions.
So it depends on if it's a subdivision.
Well, someone wants to build a a mobile park and sub divides the land for it.
Yeah, then it would go through the subdivision process. So go through it just as a major subdivision.
So if somebody buys a parcel without changing zoning or anything, if it's already zoned commercial, they can basically do whatever they want.
Not, well, not necessarily.
If it's commercial, they they would have to, I mean, to do a mobile home park or campground, they'd have to get a conditional use permit with the standards that we're going to adopt.
Okay, so you all.
Yeah.
You'll take, okay, that's, that was my question.
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, it won't be just like, mobile home parks are allowed here, go ahead and do it. Yeah, there there will be standards and they'll help follow.
Guidelines and those.
And we'll get a chance to look at those.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Are are there not standards now? Your tent is will be standards, but.
Well, there will be standards in the zoning resolution. There are no standards in the zoning resolution because they're in the subdivision, I guess.
We need to wait to do this until we do that. I'm just.
Correct, so both of these will go forward at the same time.
That's so.
Our, we're here now with the subdivision. We haven't gotten to the zone.
Okay, no, just just again, looking for gaps in coverage. Yeah, so us, a mobile home park would not be a subdivision unless you sold the slips or.
Sold or or sold or rented out.
Isn't that precisely what they do?
What's that?
Isn't that precisely what a trade court does?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, so it's gonna depend like if it is, if you're just renting the structure, the mobile home itself and say that's con- uh, common area, like they went through a um, condominiumization uh, process like we saw up in Centennial a while back, then no. Cause there's no, there's no land being divided. Uh, you're just getting essentially a leasehold interest in the structure.
Our our biggest, our biggest mobile home park is Country Meadows, um, isn't our biggest? Well, one of our biggest ones, Atlantic Ranch, probably, okay. But anyways, like, um, it's one lot. It's one big survey lot and then they have, you know, rentable, I guess, lots within there. The difference is 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 what we're, I think what we're talking about is if somebody comes in and does a mobile home park and it's, they would gi- give us a plan to show us yeah, this is where these leasable or rentable lots are going to be, but they're not going to actually file that with the clerk to make it a subdivision. So they're not parsing it out, so each of those could be individually sold.
Okay, and I'll suggest we save discussion of mobile homes until we have something pertaining to one of us.
Yeah, yeah, although I think it's relevant to know that it's.
That's a good thought. That's a great point.
Um, one more general thought that runs through this, um. In in many places in Mr. Arsaliter, I don't want to go, it says with the approval of the county engineer. Um. I just kind of flagged, is that, is that appropriate that we delegate this county contractor to make these decisions or should those come back to the planning office or something or?
I really, all my ones with like the expertise necessary to make a determine on that, determination on those items where it is appropriate. I mean, unless we have like a professional engineer on the planning and zoning commission.
Yeah, I'm not looking for work for us. It just, it just struck me that that, is that new that we have would delegate to Jake this explicit, he has to sign off here that this is okay and it's just between him and the applicant.
Uh, we already have that for um, review of improvements.
Review of improvement.
So like, yeah, it it already in the subdivision improvements chapter, um. You know, previously it was like any, any sort of improvement for the subdivision, that subdivider's responsibility, that all has to be reviewed. Uh, or that already has to be reviewed by the county engineer and signed off on, um.
And and I don't think it's taken away from your authority to, or or whatever, to provide comments and suggestions and make recommendations to the board of county commissioners, because ultimately the board has to make the decision. Um, I I think those sections that that we're giving, you know, the kind of a little bit of a decision making is on those specific items, but as a whole, you you will look at those and if you don't agree, I mean, by all means, you could, you know, make a recommendation to, you know, the board in in whatever you don't agree with.
And and I I was not by any means wanting to be a highway engineer. I was just trying to trace the thread of authority, the way it's written. But Jake or whoever's in that position would would have the the authority to say, yes, this is okay. No, this is not okay. But what you're telling me is in fact, even that would be yes, I will recommend this for approval by the board. Maybe that's a subtlety. Is he not? It seemed inappropriate that he would be the final authority. I don't mean that should be us, but.
No, he's working as staff.
It, yeah.
I mean, it's a technical review, you know, those pieces are technical, but like the overall permit, I mean, that's, that's gotta be approved by the board, so.
Good. Yeah, just caught my eyes. I was going through. It's okay. So I'm done with my, I think with my planetary stuff, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, very good. Those were uh, crucial points to go over. So we will, I will blade on down through page one one. Anything there, anyone? One, two. One, three.
Just, okay, I'll keep up with you.
One, four. Anything with your ergents is?
Where was that?
That's one, five.
Okay. Two, one.
About definitions.
Yeah, I I was wondering to why minors, again, looking at the strikeouts, what happened to minor subdivision? I see that it's defined later at five twenty one, but what was the thinking on what gets to be in the in the definitions chapter?
Um. Well, uh, so I think we already had major and minor subdivision, um, and large acreage. Uh, but I was going more on the the route of subdivision and then there are sort of items underneath that, types of subdivisions, uh, which is how like Wyoming statute is usually laid out in their their definitions and I think it makes for a cleaner organization because they're conceptually all under the same heading.
That they being, well, I didn't quite follow.
So i- if we, if you go down.
There are two, four.
Right.
There's subdivision, there's subdivision, large acreage, major.
Right, yeah, I saw they were all defined later on. It just seemed like we went to such difficulty to define roads that that those two. All right, anyway, I just was was wondering if that that was a deliberate uh, idea to put them in one place somewhere else.
Yes.
Got moved down under S instead of I know, I eventually found it, but.
So then they're all lumped together for easier comparison. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments about definitions then?
Um, road. Includes the land between road lines. I just flagged that. Now let me see what I had here. So a road. Proved by official action and includes the land between road lines. What did that mean? That phrase. I meant, I meant J.
So I think that that was just the previous uh, standard, or that was the previous destination for street and I just changed street to road. Cause from what I could best tell, we don't have streets in the county. We have roads. Um, streets generally entail something for vehicular movement uh, bounded on both sides by structures consistently, um.
They made my comments, just review that phrase and say, if it's if it's useful, omit it, because it didn't immediately make sense to this reader.
I don't. Yeah, I do not think, uh, that it necessarily does make a lot of sense. Between road and lines. I guess it would be a road.
Is it like a turning lane? So you have the roads and then you have a turning lane that's between road line? I mean, that's kind of what I had in mind, when I just.
Um. And lines, it would be well, or shoulder, like edge of shoulder, which we don't even really have shoulders anymore, so I guess I can take a look at that.
Yeah, I just, I just flagged it as a, so something to look at, because. Okay, that's what I had on that page.
Yeah, questions about com- about definitions?
Good question. If we don't have streets, do we still have alleys?
Yeah, and the definition of road includes streets. It was just a a change in terminology because it was, street and road were used alternatively throughout like the. A change in terminology, because it was, street and road were used alternatively throughout like the entire thing. Particularly in the road standards. And um it made sense to just choose and have that included. A sort of vehicular movement area. Anything else about definitions? In that case, chapter three, planning requirements.
Oh, I still have definitions. Oh, I'm sorry that I do have one, I was.
Go ahead.
Page numbers.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, bottom page four, uh, major subdivision, and that is now defined again at five twenty-one, so just a little inconsistency. What get, what got defined where? Um, so you might just look and see if you've been consistent in keeping your definitions all together.
Where was it?
I'm at subdivision major, it's um, it's two, four of the red line, under the definition of subdivision, I guess. I just noted that I saw that definition appear twice, and I thought you were suggesting that we should keep them in one place. Whereas otherwise.
So where did you see it?
Yeah, five twenty-one, I noted.
It's on section three and section four, there's major subdivision and minor subdivision.
Where do we find it? Five twenty-one, let's use my reference.
Page forty-five, the red line.
And I'm looking at, just second here.
Chapter five?
Yeah. I just dropped a note in that I'd seen that, I saw that safe thing again later on here, five twenty, which is where.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it's down in chapter five, section three and four. Okay, so again, just, just flag that, I appreciate, we'll make these as tight as we can.
So you see that, Matt? Very good. Any else, Bernard?
Nope, I'm good there.
Okay, well then, planning requirements, chapter three. Lots of, lots of roads. Anything through, through, through three, two? Three, three? Not, not for me. Finding into chapter three, four.
My next comment is on the next chapter.
Okay, subdivision permits, chapter four. Four, one.
My, yeah, go ahead, okay, um, yeah, the, the phrase there, the first sentence under section two, separate review. It reads. Will not be accepted by the planning department until preliminary plat- and preliminary report is approved. Conditionally approved or denied by the board. I guess, like, that caught in my eye is, if you denied it, then you're done, aren't you? You're not waiting for another.
Uh, the way we defined, no, so the. Because there actually hasn't been an application for a subdivision permit yet. The application for the subdivision permit is the final plat and final report. Um, and that is how to do the timelines prescribed in eighteen five, three hundreds.
But I don't know, I remember that big discussion, that was one of the main things you did, was to try to sort this all out to the final plat. So, does that not seem out of line to suggest that we won't take a. Final plat unless you've been denied your preliminary plat, is it?
No, it's, it's the fact that it's been reviewed, that's the only way to. Be able to separate those two.
But but we could deny, can we deny a preliminary plat if it isn't really an application?
Sure.
But then they could just go right ahead and give us a final plat. Okay.
If they so choose.
Okay. There, there is a path through those, those words. And then just to remind ourselves, I'm not sure how, how many people were here when we started this. The point was to load a bunch of stuff into the preliminary plat to spare us starting the clock. On the final plats, if I remember that correctly.
Mm-hmm, yeah, well, yes, um, and to allow for. A little more thorough review than the tight timelines would otherwise provide, which is something that um. We see throughout other counties.
Right, cause well, once we go to final plat, then we have statutes that say you have to do this, and this, and this, after this, okay, that's. That's what I thought I was, was trying to say, in a preliminary stage, we're still in the discussions, let's see what you got, let's go back and forth. So this accomplishes that. So then there was, when the first time around, there was a lot of discussion about the reports that go to DEQ. And so, um, this isn't changed language, this is just reminding us of what we decided before, so we're saying. They will not send their DEQ report in. But we've basically written all of those same requirements into our preliminary plat. This is conceptually how I'm reading this, does that sound on target? So they'll kind of have written us a, a chapter twenty-three, as those of us that business call it. As part of their preliminary plat, that they will submit a, a formal version of that waterway support suitability stage of DEQ. Okay, thank you. So I'll add just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, anything on four, two? Four, three?
Um, section six. In some cases, consistency, approve, continually approve or disapprove, you use deny elsewhere. I'm reading the second sentence of section six, just a little editorial thing, just to be consistent with the clarity that you've brought to the rest of it.
Second sentence.
Is there a difference between disapprove and deny?
For second line.
Second line. For sentence. Section six, review and decision by board.
No, I mean.
Just, just flag it, your, your editorial choice.
Also line five, of that. Okay. Anything else, Robert?
Nope.
How about three, four, four? How about all the way down to subdivision requirements, chapter five? Anything else in four?
No, from me.
Okay, subdivision requirements, chapter five.
Um, this may go back to our previous comment, uh, it says delineation of hazardous fire areas identified under the requirements. So those are gonna be somewhere else now.
Uh, yeah, so those are in. Oh, shoot, where are those now? Um, under section one B of this chapter, okay, so that is. So it's like preliminary plat, which is all the information, so that now it's part of the preliminary report is delineation of hazardous fire is. Um, as that was defined in the mountainous subdivision uh standards. Which is basically anything with veg- you know, fire-prone vegetative fuel. Uh, slopes over thirty percent.
Okay, and I saw those definitions, I just think, so there.
And it's, I mean, it's essentially, the, the thought behind this was just to create a buyer beware. Like, you know, if they, if they are building in, in fire-prone areas. Should probably be aware of that. Cause there seems to be some fire experience in these guys.
Okay, and so that we do have those, those definit- definition of hazardous fire areas.
Yeah.
As, and it's outlined by slopes and vegetation, so forth.
Yeah.
Then just a, a general uh question about when we changed these before. And, and as I characterized, it moved a lot of material in preliminary plat, there was some sense that we were. Going overboard there, and, and the person has to spend all this money and do all these studies, and then we say, eh, no idea. Uh, have we gotten any, any feedback, any pushback from our developers that say, you're making me. The, the preliminary plat should be a tentative thing, and you're making, what a huge expense to do that.
I'm not really heard any. But you complain about it or whatever, I mean, this is pretty typical of, yeah, it's. Preliminary plat is usually where you get all of the, you know, all the stuff, you know, the. So that we can understand what, what is really going to happen to this property. Um, what are the impacts going to be? And the final plat is more of. This is what's gonna be filed in the clerk's office, let's make sure we have all of that information on there.
Along with your subdivision permit. Right, yeah, so the, the thing that, that, uh, we discussed earlier when we did this was. Where does the just kind of the tentative stuff, that's just in conferences with you before the preliminary plat.
Yeah, yeah, cause there are pre-application.
In conference.
Yeah.
Requirements.
I will say, like, we haven't had any complaints, but we also don't get a whole lot of subdivision.
All right, I've exercised this, but yeah. I just, I just read that at the time, we were quite concerned that that might be. We're defeating the whole purpose by making everybody do everything ahead of time and escaping the timelines. Things that the final plat require.
I mean, it's gonna, no, because they're gonna have to put all that in there anyway, just like that's the. A lot of it is just bare minimum statute, a lot of it's engineering, and it's, that's gonna cost.
Well, if they go forward to a full-scale subdivision, the, the point was, how far does the person have to go before they can bail out, say this?
I mean, I think realistically, that's gonna happen at the pre-application conference phase. And like Darren Jorgen telling them like, oh yeah, go for it, and it's gonna not meet anything.
And, you know, even with the subdivisions we get in, probably ninety percent of them are. Minor, and they're not gonna be going through all of this stuff, so.
And it speaks to a comment that you'd made to a question, plat of, somebody comes in and says. Wait a second, I've spent all this money, you've gotta give me my application, so we want to avoid being in the situation, obviously. Okay, that's, well, and subdivisions aren't a right, right?
No, there's no vested right in subdivision, um. It's a, it's a legislative decision uh of the county commissioners, which involves a. Wide variety of policy to um considerations.
Oh, no, that, that person would be wrong, but there's substantial political, emotional momentum behind them.
That's true, um, and then. The way that the uh exception of the. Subdivision, like, you know, exclusions or exceptions are written. You can carve out land pretty easily.
Okay.
How about, anything through uh page five, four?
Uh, I just want to comment, are we still going with a one hundred year flood events? Do that.
Yep, page five, nine, that's addressed.
That's um, section fourteen.
We also have the adopt our flood, flood damage prevention resolution. Which also covers um subdivisions as well.
I'm just asking, given the recent flooding events across the country and the world. Seems like that again.
So the, the floodplain resolution stuff is gonna cover like structures. A lot of this evaluation of floodplains uh was more for Jake and roads and subdivision improvements. So you're not, you know, building a road way through a floodplath, fu- flood path. Uh, and then that just gets washed away.
Acquiring proper size.
Cause now, the individual structures don't come at the subdivision stage. How about any comments down to fire hazards on page five, ten?
Uh, a question, it might be, it bears a hook, Mr. Row. But David just said, um, maybe it goes to Jake, why the switch from defining our floods by. How many inches per hour to a hundred-year event? Just curious.
Yeah, that's, that's a question for him.
I mean, it's got an interesting point.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean.
Hundred-year events have become a little bit.
We are, we are seeing one in a thousand year events happening in the same week.
I think that they're defined in the same.
And a hundred-year event is actually a, a one percent chance event, it's not really a hundred-year, but that's.
We used to define it as a two and a half inch per hour event.
Right, you know, I see that, I. Yeah, that's, uh, that, that was Jake's preference, and I believe that they mean the same thing, but I'm not sure.
And there was a reason.
And it's also, well, and, and they're all standardized. Like, it's all based on like NOAA or like, like the city of Miami has a. I think it's NOAA, or US, no, it's not USGS, yeah, it's NOAA IDF. Curves are NOAA Atlas rainfall. Yeah. So the city has uh. Like rainfall determination standards and NOAA, and I think that they largely line up, I don't. The way I can write this.
I'll ask Jake if I see.
Or, I mean, if they're significant enough questions, we can always ask him to. Address these to the planning and zoning commission. Okay, what's gonna down through five, ten, anything else, excuse me, anything else?
What, what page?
Five, ten.
Five.
Through fire hazards. Keep it going down.
And just with the higher hazard stuff, we did, um, me and Joe, I believe, talked to, to Chad and. Really, he, they just wanna see, see these, and they can help with any identification of, of problems that they may see. Um, but I think this is a good standard for us, so.
Before we get the one typo. At the beginning of that same page, it says five percent, and then in parentheses, five and two symbol of percent, one can be deleted.
What's that?
It's in section B.
Oh, nice, yeah.
On five, ten, you see that? Yeah, just tiny, tiny thing.
Okay.
Is that the typo you had, Michael?
Uh, no.
Shoot.
Thanks.
Five, eleven?
Five, eleven, go ahead.
Uh, deleted a, a discussion of traffic studies.
Moved uh down to. Uh, subdivision design standards, um, we had that kind of like standalone section on ingress and egress, if you're over thirty lots. Which is added, I think it was the most recent amendment to the zoning or subdivision resolution. That uh got added essentially with this. Cause it was, it was kind of weird then, we had a standard for if it was thirty, then it may. Require traffic impact study, and then if it's over twenty, it also may, but they were in different spots. So we kinda um, put those under ingress and egress standards for subdivision design. And address them are kind of harmonized a little bit.
Six, four and six, five are where they were moved.
Okay. How about down through uh five, thirteen, on to the next page to final plat subdivision permit. It's still five, fourteen.
Nothing, nothing here.
Okay.
I do have one question about the fencing, are we referencing our fencing regulation here?
Yes. How about down all the way through five, eighteen or so?
No.
How about down through major subdivisions, section three on page five, that's twenty-one. And then on the mi- minor subdivisions, right underneath it. And large acre or subdivisions.
Okay, just above that at item seven, I'm looking at the deletion, and I dropped a note into myself to ask what was going on there under item seven, just wrote. Above, section.
Oh, um.
Right away.
So. It used to be that it allowed a uh smaller right-of-way width and smaller roadbed width. You can go below twenty-four feet, uh, if you have a really small subdivision for your roadway width. Uh, according to um Jake's standards. Uh, so, that would. That would sort of be more stringent, otherwise we just left um. The right of way width. You get a smaller right of way width than otherwise.
So eighty foot right of way width. For roads. Road right of way width should be a minimum of fifty feet. Does sound like.
Yeah, something's weird, but.
Two different things, no? Saying, but is it eighty or is it fifty? Maybe I just lost thread in the red lines, but.
Yeah, no. Uh, we'll take that back. Cause well, and I previously said. However. Oh, that's, okay, sorry, so. The way that these are written. It's saying that the following county requirements will not be required. Um, so generally, you have to, what's our standard road right of way width, Ben?
That was hundred.
Eighty.
Eighty.
That's eighty. So yeah, generally, your road right of way width is eighty, so it's saying eighty is not required, however. Um, right of way width shall be a minimum. Of fifty. So that's. Cause the way it's written, if the following county requirements will not be required, it just says review or recommendation from DQ. So it's like stating affirmatively what the requirement is, and in some cases provides an alternative. Which is actually, and that was the same way I was written before.
You don't have to do eighty, but you do have to do at least fifty.
Yeah. Uh, good. I'll try them.
Yeah, if there's a more, it's just a couple uh, periods back to back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also think the next episode will be cleaner, if you're looking at the clean example rather than red line, it's easier to follow. Uh, okay, well, down through five twenty three. Five twenty four. Five twenty five. Five twenty six. Five twenty seven. This is almost the old language, five twenty eight. Then we're down to subdivision design standards, chapter six, the big one.
Comment on the first page?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, item D, um, it seemed like. That was not an unreasonable thing to require that it be. The streets be designed to accommodate adjacent subdivisions. Was that? Objectionable or covered somewhere else? I missed it or what?
So uh, planning considerations. These had no objective standard and arguably weren't standards. Um. So we can add that as a. No, and I think that we have.
I mean, it might, it might be hard to corral that, because what do I know what the neighbor's gonna do, but I guess it would mean. Don't, don't cul de sac all your roads or something.
So.
Where? There's a, well, I know there's the thirty lot thing, but.
Yeah, so in the thirty lot thing, you have to consider it if you're using or the, any adjacent subdivision counts towards your lot number if you're connecting to adjacent. Uh, streets. Um.
I mean, I read this is something different than than that, this.
It could be added into general. Or it could be added back into like road layout. Um. Under road standards. Uh, but I guess. Oh, yeah, unless there's justification for an alternative design, I. There needs to be like a little more objective of the standard, so. I mean, the justification can be, we're not going to. Like. They're not gonna subdivide.
So it does, it's not really clear whether it's existing adjacent subdivisions or just. I mean, if there is no adjacent subdivision because they haven't subdivided. And that wouldn't. No, you can't plan for something that isn't there.
Well, unless it's on the major street plan.
Oh, I see.
Shall be designed to prevent continuation of streets into adjacent subdivisions.
So maybe existing or planned adjacent subdivisions or perspectives. But with that's crossed out anyway, so.
I mean, if anyone. Has something to offer, um, that could very easily go into uh, the road layout. Subsection under road standards.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe it's just, it's something, sure, it had an echo of our preliminary growth plan, of course, where we've made much of, we want the streets to line up when the next guy subdivides.
Yeah.
But, but again, have the right standards to that, I, I, I'm not sure, but maybe we could chew on that a little bit.
That part does come up later.
Uh, well, the, the part about egress and access egress does.
I know, I'm talking about accommodation for the major street plan.
Yes, yes, but it's a major street line, but again, this is, this is slightly different.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
General standards, excuse me, general standards or lot standards, bottom six one. How about six two?
Six two, um, I'd be at the top, uh, I thought, consider just seems like a awfully weak word to me. I thought about it. Uh, what do we, is there a? A different way to say that? Designed and development center shall consider. Shall consider geologic hazards, fire hazard areas, shall, I don't know, accommodate or. I don't know, that just seemed pretty tame. No.
Well, um.
Yeah, I guess putting myself in the staff's, you, you could say, no, you failed to consider this, you. Use this as your backup.
Yeah.
How about accommodate or something, but that'd be too descriptive. That's true.
Yeah, I guess what we're asking them to do is just identify these areas that could be a potential hazard, so I guess what would be the?
The development then is, would be on the zoning side.
Well, I mean, unless they change lot dimensions and.
Well, you want them to not just identify, you want them to accommodate, you want them to go the other way, if there's a hazard, right, or. Or.
As soon as we're. Cause the. The geologic hazards as it, as it is right now is those defined by the state geological survey, earthquakes, landslides, volcanic eruptions. Expansive soils, which, you know, what is that, Bernard?
Oh, yeah, certain soil types, if you put water on them, they expand and. Screw up your concrete.
Oh, okay. Uh, wind blown deposits, which. What's that?
Sand dunes that are unstable.
Okay. And uh, quadrenary faulting.
Quadrenary faulting, that's faulty that has recently had movement on it and might again, there aren't any.
Seismic activity.
Yeah, it would be a potential for seismic activity.
Uh, so yeah, we're hoping that people aren't gonna. Try to sell someone a lot. And say, put your house on top of.
On top of a sand dune, say, if you're talking about expansive soils, uh.
Or a volcanic eruption.
I like, I like accommodate, just, I think that's a good word there.
Accommodate.
No, not accommodate, I mean, you, you, you design your subdivision to. You know, look at and accommodate where these hazards are so that there's places on each lot to build that they're not. Necessarily right in the middle of the hazard.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know.
I think that's our point, is we'd like them to do something and not just identify.
Not consider.
Hmm, yeah. All right, we can change that.
Okay, um, just down below, a single lot shall not be divided by a road. Or another lot, but I think we included driveways in our definition of road, so I stumbled on that one. Do I not get a? Put a driveway through the middle of my lot?
Uh. Each lot.
Well, the driveway in theory ends at the house, right?
Uh, wait, sorry, where, yeah, they're, they're under. Uh, where is this?
Okay, under lot design, items. One, two, three, four. I'm on page.
Yep.
Six, six two at the red line.
Yeah, well, I'll add that back in. Good cash, yeah.
Okay, our, our intention there is to.
His voting.
Allow a driveway on anywhere you want on your lot, I assume, right?
Well.
I mean, we're not gonna be putting driveways on the plat either.
It wouldn't be dividing.
Yeah. No, I think the drop, there wasn't driveways in your definition, we have a boat.
It is.
It is, but why would it be dividing?
It would have to span an entire.
And when you do a subdivision, that's not gonna be shown on there, only the roads are gonna be shown on there, so the driveway would actually come after. So it'll all be, already be approved, and then if the driveway, yeah, why, unless it crosses the property to get to another lot, which.
Would be a road.
Oh, you're.
Which they shouldn't.
Of the word divided, I guess I was thinking of that in, about in a technical, not in a bureaucratic sense, but in a physical.
Yeah.
Splitting, okay. Is that clear that that by not divided, that word divided means running a lot line down? Is what I hear you saying.
Well, well, not necessarily.
It would be, it would be.
Intersecting the entirety. In, oh, in some direction.
So like, if we had a road going down the middle of a lot, and lot one has a road going down the middle of it, that would not be allowed. We would make that go, you know, move it to their lot line, it goes, lot, lot one's here, and lot two's here, the road will go in between it.
But if they, and they wouldn't want it to go. And it didn't run from end to end of lot one, that's a different story.
Yeah, right.
Well, driveway was what I was getting, my house is in the middle of my five acre lot, and I wanna go through the middle of it to my house.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you could just put in there parentheses excluding driveway.
Okay, cause I thought driveway got included in that. So I was just trying to get coordinated. Okay.
How about on down to road standards?
Can I ask a question before then?
Go ahead.
What is block design? What does it mean?
Uh, block is. A series of.
Lots.
Lots.
So like city blocks?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wish I, we don't really see those, but. Centennial, I guess.
Well, we've always.
We have, we have lots, we have lots and blocks on every.
Yeah.
Really?
Block one, lot one and lot two.
All right. My bad.
Yeah, so. I don't know what it does, but we put them on it. How about down to the map on page six four? Major street plan.
Where to?
Down to the major street plan map on six four. I'm going down to six five.
I did, uh, just clarification at the beginning of the, the, this is a thirty lot business, remind me about first filing, second filings, third filings, are those. Separate subdivisions, or do they have to do all their filings in their initial plat? Tell us about that.
So this will be based on the preliminary plat, right? So a preliminary plat would have all the lots of the proposed subdivision. In theory. And then. The final plat would be, that's when they would phase it. Phase one would do. These lots in the preliminary plat, but phase, phase two would do the next section of lots, phase three would do the next section. So the preliminary shows everything.
Hey.
Um, and then the phases would just be for the, the final plats.
So, so phases and filings are the same thing? I mean, we talked about first filing. Girt subdivision, second filing.
Oh, like terminology?
Like the paddocks did, you're like the paddocks.
Yeah.
That was theirs terminology. Okay.
I mean. Yeah, I don't know. Cause they, yeah.
They called it like second filing.
Second filing, yeah, cause they, I mean, they did that, I think, cause they changed. Like when the paddocks came in, they had a preliminary plat. And then they built one phase of that, then they came back and changed their preliminary plat, so then they changed the name of the preliminary plat to like. Second filing, and then they did the phases within the, yeah, I, I don't. It was terminology I don't.
Okay, so filings really doesn't mean anything.
Not really, no, no.
And, and how it prevents me if I wanted to do. My fifty acre and escape this clause, doing it to completely separate twenty five lot subdivisions. Or, yeah. I mean, acres but lots, how, how do we?
Um. Where do we have?
Say, if, if I found your, this burdensome to provide two, two points of ingress and access, couldn't I escape the? Well, by just doing two subdivisions?
Not if. It connects to the other subdivision.
Oh, because of what Mr. R said earlier, then I might access would be through somebody else, okay?
Now, if they use different accesses on both of them, then that'd be a different story.
Well, if it's the same parent lot.
That's a parent lot.
Yeah, so like, you can, if you, if you do a minor subdivision. On one area of a parcel. You then can't come back with a second. Minor subdivision because that parent parcel has already been subdivided.
And that parentage was established at some earlier stage when I bought the thing in the first place?
Yeah, so if it's, if it's a part, if you're trying to subdivide a parcel, part of which has already been subdivided. That kicks you out of minor, so you can't just. You know, do sixty lots by doing twenty minor subdivisions.
Okay, I'm still thinking, if I owned a forty acre parcel. I could chop off twenty acres and do a subdivision. And then I could do another, and another, and another. I mean.
Well, you could, it'd be a major subdivision.
But the, the subsequent two would be major subdivisions. Even if they were each three acres, so.
Cause I hadn't sold the other. Junk, the other chunk yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Still on that, uh, page six, five. They say that you deleted all the requirements, is that just because? You know, we shouldn't tell them how to build roads?
Uh, that comes later.
Oh, they've been moved.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
And modified, I think, by Jake, but. Anything down through, through?
Six, six. Uh, yeah, I had a question on the naming on page six, six, it just, I think needs a little more qualification, it says road names shall be substantially different from any other established public or private road names. In, in the world or in that subdivision or?
In the world, yeah. Your list is getting.
Seriously? Could be. I mean, do we beat it to subdivision or the county, or what's the?
Yeah.
In the county, okay, I just add that in. I, I would assume the county would be the logical choice.
Anything through six, seven? How about through six, eight, let's see, human approved road diagram?
Oh, I love it. I'll go build a road.
Six, nine? Six, ten?
Well, I see how you, so, yeah.
Six, eleven? Six, twelve is all struck out. Six, thirteen?
Uh, yeah, the title of section six is sewage disposal and water supply requirements, but there are no subsequent water supply requirements. So perhaps the title needs to be adjusted to the content.
Section six sewage disposal and water supplier.
Um. Sorry, one second. I know, well. There's still, uh, sewage disposal requirements and. Our slides, fire safety.
Fire safety.
So, do you wanna change that to, uh, sewage?
Or sewage and, and fire safety?
And.
Guess I was expecting to see something about adequacy of the, of the water supply.
Mm-hmm. Um.
And that didn't. Surgeon and. Fire safety requirements.
Yeah, we can do, and, uh, and fire water supply.
Good.
That should be fine. How about down through six, six, eight, six, sixteen? Six, seventeen, down, we see a fence diagram on six, eighteen. Two diagrams. Landscaping has been moved. Six, nineteen?
About six, seventeen, sorry to go back a little bit, there's a statement deviations. Uh. Shall be better, only with recommenda- recommendation that has been struck out, what's the provision for deviations? Or are we permitting deviations?
Um.
I mean, I think the variance. Section was covered up. I don't know why we removed it.
Well, shoot, actually, that. Entire. Underground utilities section might be from. That's permitted by. Uh. Public Service Commission, then we can't require that. Um, and my thought was. Unless it's something hyper technical, like engineering. Then it's, uh, we already have a standard for that, there's variance, to try to get rid of those like. Sub variances that were kind of granted here and there.
Okay, so it would kind of go back to that earlier point of the county engineer is authorized to give you a clearance on these things, we don't need to talk.
But only where that's put, which is like road standards. Anything else? Need a variance.
Okay.
Um, but for something like roads, which are. Much more. I guess. Ad hoc. Then maybe the variant standard isn't. Or that's not the best place to go, but if it's like an affirmative standard. Applicable across the board, then we don't need a specific. Like sub variance requirement.
Well, right, so this, this is under underground utilities, and it tells me what I can and can't do, and then. There is no provision for deviations.
There is variance.
Oh, as just global variances?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, although I'll need to look into that, we might need to remove that in its entirety.
Yeah, think about whether we're stepping on. Other toes.
Okay, through six, nineteen?
Top of six, nineteen. Shall apply to new residential subdivisions, including mobile home, ports within the major corridors of the unincorporated area, major corridors are. What's a corridor? Why does it?
Major corridors are eighty. Two eighty-seven, I mean, it listed.
Right, but it, so it say you can't build on Interstate eighty, or is there some idea of a corridor, which I would suggest that is some distance from. I eighty, I'm just looking for a tighter definition here, where you.
I mean, we've always applied it right next to it, so, like, if it's off the road, or if it's not. Continuous to one of those corridors, then. Wouldn't have to do it.
Within the right of way is what you mean?
Or adjacent to them?
Okay, bug.
I was just telling you how we've applied it.
Okay, I'm just reading the words and wondering what they mean.
So this is for landscaping. And it's for the subdivision lots that. Border.
Those roads.
Not necessarily the whole subdivision, just.
Then it should say border the right of way, or.
Probably.
Something like that.
That would be.
Something like that.
I mean, corridor to me means a kind of a. Here's the road, and here's either side of it, and somewhere that ceases to be a corridor, as opposed to a right of way, so.
Yeah, if you're talking about the strip of land.
We haven't defined any corridors, so.
Okay, so.
Like for I twenty-five, that would be like entire towns.
Yeah. Okay, so find some different words there.
Um, yeah, alright.
Or define what a corridor is, but it sounds like it's something like, like Mr. Robb said, it's contiguous with the, or adjacent to the right of way. That's a thing.
Through six, twenty-eight? Well, I've got one type of there, and this is a type. Which page? Six, twenty. In two A, it says shall place own. Coniferous tree, I think it probably should be one.
One.
Yeah.
So, I've been told.
It wasn't me, though, so.
I've been told that the city of Laramie does not allow, uh, planting coniferous trees. Along the streets anymore, is that? Yeah, no, I, I, like, that's because it blocks.
We hear a lot of complaints about their landscaping standards, but not, never like any specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, because we rescued a lot of spruce trees off, uh, uh, UW campus, that they grew, uh, in, oh, the new landscaping rock crabs and stuff. And we are going to donate them to who, you know, their. Um, outdoor ground. And other groups in town that help with landscaping for the city. And the city said absolutely not, we're not accepting, so we don't allow. Any more coniferous trees to be planted along roads in Laramie, you can plant them in your backyard, but not.
Along the roads.
Because they obstruct the view.
Gotcha, hmm.
Just as a comment. So I don't know, it says one coniferous, do we specify what type of tree?
Um, there are specifica- specifications, right?
I would say.
Deciduous, we at least make that. Whatever.
Do we wanna specify a coniferous tree or etrus?
Presists in the main screen.
Right, yeah.
Why would you define it?
That's assuming they can even. Grow, grow.
How about anything else through page seven, Mike?
Um. Yeah, maybe, there's this discussion about who's gonna take care of these trees. Uh. Five, five, for example, um, under, this is page six, little twenty-one at the red line, um. Until such time as the owner or the HOA assume maintenance responsibilities, but. We don't have any. Documents where anybody assumes responsibility or anything, do we? I mean, this all just seems.
We were simply.
Unless we do an improvement.
Agreement or whatever we're having.
We don't know now, no. So, I mean, essentially, like, if. A subdivision is told that they have to put a tree there until they sell that lot. So they're true to take care of, or unless it's put on some sort of like common property, then the HOA would assume.
Well, this says that it's the responsibility of the developer forever.
Not.
Until such time as somebody else assumes responsibility.
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll ask the, a broader question, what are your thoughts on landscaping standards in the first place? Yeah, I mean, the one, the one thing about. You know, trying to plant trees in the county, sometimes the soil stinks, getting water tubes stinks, it's, yeah.
I wouldn't say we wanna be in that business.
I agree, I think we should not. Be too specific about landscaping.
That's one to ask, a great one, strike the hole.
If the water, nobody pay attention, um.
That's objection.
Suck use, I would, yeah, I would take that a whole section out.
Okay, and I, yeah, I like, it's lovely idea, but I just find the whole thing is, this town on earth, would you ever actually do this, force it, who's responsible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And it's getting dangerous, and fire hazard, and, yeah, lack of view.
Yeah, like it, nine mile, can't grow a tree.
Yeah.
So these are existing standards, and we just kind of. Pull them off, here to four.
No.
No.
I.
You make them.
I did as best as I could.
I mean, what happens is we, we require them to provide a plan, they'll provide a plan of the landscaping, I mean, this is in zoning too, so. We provide, they provide a plan, and they go, okay, this is what you're gonna do, and then. We approve the, their permits or whatever, and everybody moves on, and landscaper doesn't usually go in.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe. Tendatively out of this meeting, we're gonna get rid of the whole thing, make life easier for both you guys, but remind us if it shows up somewhere, there's some. Collateral damage here, if we just delete it here, but.
I don't think it's gonna hurt in the subdivision, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else through seven dash one?
About that?
A lot of stricken language.
Yeah, well, we see we got rid of a whole chapter for.
How about through seven dash two?
Again, these are mostly just these whole stricken sections.
But each number did not change to seven, one. After six, twenty-two. After six, twenty-two, we go six, one.
Yeah, I just noticed that as well.
Yeah.
What the heck, where?
Seven, one. Uh, there was a section break that I didn't hit.
Okay.
But there is, there is a seven, one later.
Oh, there's, yes.
So that will delete it, okay.
Or, is it, is the word improvements defined?
Very good question. Uh, I mean, common, the, I guess one nice thing is that. That does have a very good plain language definition.
We can put definitions.
I mean, we could throw a definition in there, but, um, is a pretty standard common language definition.
Yeah, I guess I would oppose having it, it just, I think we all kind of know what, see it, but if, if there is a useful, workable definition, that, that might be, still is improvement. Two near, is it build a building, or?
Uh. Either. Most of Petunia is de minimis, but if you put in two, though.
Okay. There's Petunia lobby out there, that's.
It's true, yeah, any, any alteration to the natural state of land? Um.
What would there be?
Improves its value.
Yeah, okay, I mean, when we've, uh, in the aquifer stuff, we've talked about those kinds of words float around, so.
Yeah.
See, if there's a way to throw a standard definition, I'd think that would be useful.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got, Mr. Jarrett.
How about through seventy-four, which brings us down to the stricken mobile home park camper out application standards? Anything through seven, four?
My page number was. Again, so. Chapter ten. The chapter ninety, went back to seven, one.
Okay, seven, one through seven, three.
And then seven, one.
And then.
I think it's because those chapters are removed, I'm guessing. Yeah, that's just the way Microsoft Word does like breaks.
It's okay.
So all the mobile home stuff is gone. And mobile home park utilities is gone. Campfire regulations is grown. Plain draft. So that's.
Okay.
I could go through it.
Thank you. And Jim, thanks for.
I mean, I think that was a, a pretty big lift, compared to what we started with, a few, or where we were a few weeks ago, so. I'm gonna say good job, y'all. And I'm glad that Jane weighed in. Anything else pertaining to this item? Any other questions? Anything else you want from us, David, for now? Matt?
No.
Um, in that case. Current planning projects, uh, anything for us, David? You've got planning and solution, as we did that. How about any staff updates?
Tell me. You tell me, but. I don't think we have anything to update, too.
Nothing from the city pertaining to Laramie's plan? Okay.
Question?
Go ahead.
Um, uh, Mr. Harris, what is the status of the APZ lawsuits? They're still alive, or one's still alive?
Um. Yeah, so there, uh. We had oral arguments, um, in the. On the, uh, twenty twenty-three amendments, February twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three amendments honor manned. Um. Back from the Supreme Court in the District Court. Uh, two or three weeks ago. I think it was the nineteenth of June, um. So, we are, uh, the decision from the District Court will be forthcoming. Um, and then. We're underway with briefing in the appeals of the December. Fourth, twenty twenty-four, um, amendments to. The APZ regulations and the small wastewater. Um, regulations specific to the APZ.
And so what, what's the schedule, your, your, you have a briefing schedule, and the?
But what's? Yeah, so, uh, petitioners, warm livestock have submitted, uh, their brief, and I have begun working on respondent's brief.
Okay. Second question related, the DEQ delegation agreement has been, uh, dominantly up for review for. Years, what's the status of that?
Um, the last time we talked to DEQ, which I think was. This year, they said that they were working on updating our delegation agreement, and that. We would discuss that when they, when they got to it or whatever, but I, we haven't heard anything from DEQ, so.
And they didn't offer any timelines for themselves, goals? Just.
No.
When they get to it.
When they get to it.
Okay, just wondering.
Where are things staying with, uh, Big Wind project down in the south? Has ground been broken?
Um, so they have built a couple of roads down there. Um. But they are. They're still planning on going forward, I believe, this fall with some more construction, but.
Were we talking about the Thai siding?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they are building, uh, the, I. Can't speak today. They are building the turbines on the west side.
Yeah, that's why they built the roads.
But it's not. Well, the.
There's no turbines that have went up that I know of.
Oh, yeah, I flew in from the conference and saw. They're putting them up, hmm?
You're Thai siding?
No, not in Thai siding, on a, I thought there was another wind project on the west side.
On the west side of two eighty-seven?
Oh.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, rail tie goes across two eighty-seven.
Yeah, it's on two.
Oh, but it was all the way by this noise.
Oh, are you talking of Rock?
Oh, it could be Rock Creek, yeah, Rock Creek's going up right now.
Or, or the I eighty.
Rock Creek is going up.
It's operating.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was asking about her.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
They're, they did a year of construction last year, and they're finishing it up this year.
Thought it was up and running.
I guess not that I'm aware of, I can't say for certain, but I know that we've been communicating with them about some stuff, so.
They've been a hairy because, uh. All the tax credits are going to, on out in December twenty twenty-five.
We, we did raise, I mean, one of the things that.
We, we did raise, I mean, one of the things that, uh, rail tie folks were concerned with was the tariffs and.
Yeah.
How that impacts stuff. I don't, I don't know, that was an excuse for them not getting going, I guess, so.
Diana, do you have any comments?
Um, just, I will probably, I will be gone next month, so I'm gonna try to zoom in, but likely will not be able to.
Okay, uh, would you let me know if, uh, you, if you can?
Well, let's just say I can't and if.
Well, I mean, wait, yeah, back there, yeah, like, well, you can tell me, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, soon you're not gonna be here based on that, and if you change, you can perhaps let me know.
Okay, I'll do that.
We're off. Nothing. All right, uh, well, our next regular meeting will be August thirteenth at five P M. This room, I believe, will have some bylaws to tick with that. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Let's stop with reporting.